Please stand. We salute to the flag.
Flag allegiance.
To the flag.
The states of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Welcome all to the Township of Old Bridge zoning board of adjustment meeting for May 5th, 2022. Before I continue, can I have a roll call, please, Ms. C?
Chairman Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Stoner. Ms. Chevalier is absent. Mr. Scogno.
Here.
Ms. Andrews.
Here.
Mr. Staverty is absent. Mr. Psychowski is absent, and Mr. Kunswich is absent. Mr. Clancy. Ms. Sawant.
Here.
Ms. Shapiro.
Here.
Mr. Hart. Mr. Lavallo. Mr. Metzler. And myself, Ms. C. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome back, board members. This is the first time we've been here in 26 months. We've had 31 Zoom meetings in that time, and to the date, it was March 4th, so that's exactly 26 months. It's May 4th that we last appeared in the courtroom. But I think we did, board members, and I want to thank everybody for all those Zoom meetings. I know that they are sometimes inconvenient. I know it is difficult sometimes to maneuver between muted, non-muted, whether you're on or you're off. So I thank everyone for participating. You're great volunteers, and I know you would, but it was a little hard at times, I think, for the professionals that appear here as well. It's not easy. And Ms. Shapiro and Ms. Sawant, thank you for your guidance all through that. Mr. Clancy will be representing us tonight from the Dasty Firm in Clancy. We're going to move forward. I just have a couple announcements. Number one, if you're following the agenda and you're here on this matter, which is number 4-2022Z, that's GHS Properties Management LLC, that's located at 22 Oakland Court, that matter is going to be continued. It will not be heard tonight. So if you're here on that matter, there's no sense in sitting around unless you want to watch the rest of the meeting. We don't have a date for the continuance at this time, but there'll be, I'm sure, there'll have to be renotation anyway. That matter is off the agenda this evening. We will follow the agenda, except we're going to move the 2G reform to the second application. The first application is going to be Charles Goodwin. I assume is that you, sir? We're not going to call that just yet, but I have some little housework business here to do first. Phones off, please. If you're here in the courtroom, at least silence them so they don't interrupt the testimony. Obviously, we're being televised on OBT, Old Bridge TV, Channel 15, and as well as this is recorded for YouTube. So if you could find this, if you had to leave and you wanted to watch the rest of it, you could watch it on YouTube. It's usually out within a couple of days. Secondly, if you're going to testify tonight from the public, the professionals will be seated at the table in front for a microphone. Any public person that's going to testify or has questions, there's a microphone standing right there in the middle of the room, just behind the table. It's a directional mic, which means you have to speak right into it in order to be picked up. If you're turning left or right, your voice isn't going to be heard, so it's not going to be recorded. So just keep that in mind, please. Once again, I thank everyone for their appearance here tonight. We'll move forward. Board members, item number three is the minutes. That's from April 7th, 2022 meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review them. Absent any comments or suggestions for additions or deletions? I'd ask someone move them to memorialize them.
Move it, Scogno.
Connor. Okay, Scogno, and second is Connor. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Stoner.
Yes.
Mr. Scogno.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the resolutions. We have one. That's 10-2022Z, Michelle Schmitz. Mr. Clancy.
Mr. Chairman, there's a resolution for zoning board here. It's application number 10-2022Z. Be it resolved, the zoning board of adjustment, the town of Old Bridge approves this. This is for Michelle Schmitz filed an application for the property known as 39 Delray Place in Old Bridge, New Jersey, otherwise known as Block 1003, Lot 39 on the tax map of Old Bridge. The application was subject to public hearing on April 9th, 2020, or sorry, April 7th, 2022. The applicant provided public notice for the application and support. The applicant testified along with the applicant's general contractor, Joseph Moy. The applicant sought bulk relief, bulk variance relief pursuant to 40:55D-7DC, and also the applicant had a permit denial from the, originally from the zoning officer, Mr. Damian Gill. They seek the following bulk variance relief, which is listed here within the ordinance. Applicant testified. There was some history about the property. Applicant's going to keep the same footprint with the home. They went through the entire project, and we have a resolution as a result of this. Zoning Board of Adjustment, Township of Old Bridge, on the 5th day of May 2022, the board hereby confirms that this resolution, this action taken by the board on April 7th, 2022, granting the application of Michelle Schmitz's variance relief for NJSA 40:55D-7DC, and it lists out the conditions here. I don't need to go through the entire conditions unless you want me to.
No, that's quite all right.
Okay, and this is set for approval.
Board members, you've heard the resolution. Everyone was present at that meeting, I believe. I'd ask someone to move them for memorialization.
Connor, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second, Scogno.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Stoner.
Yes.
Mr. Scogno.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Okay, we move to our next item, and that's completeness waiver. We have one of them this evening. It's called the first and only one in. It's 50-2021Z. That's OBNJLLC. That's in the EDO 1 zone, located 69 Highway 35, Block 1069, Lot 1. This is for major preliminary and final site plan with C and D variance. I have the following memo that we've all received from the planner, Venus Sawant. I'll read it into the record. This is in reference to OBNJLLC, Block 1069, Lot 1, application 50-2021Z, major preliminary, final site plan with D1 use variance. Ms. Sawant opines the following. The subject property, also known as Block 1069, Lot 1, is located at 69 Highway 35 in the EDO 1 zone. Property contains a two-story mixed-use building with residential, multifamily apartments, and commercial space, along with five surface parking spaces. The applicant is seeking major preliminary and final site plan approval with the D1 use variance relief for the expansion of the building. Our office has reviewed the waiver request by the applicant for the following. Item 3A, environmental impact statement. Item 3B, community impact statement. Item 3C, traffic impact. Item 3D, Aqua for Recharge Assessment. Item 26, statement to the status of other approvals. Item 39B, Profiles of All Streets Adjoining the Project. Item 52, tree permit plan and application. In 1998, 1990, the zoning board approved applications for the construction of additional residential apartment units and parking area to the existing two-story building. These applications constituted the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use in the then CN zone. The applicant is proposing an addition to the commercial space on the first floor, a two-story addition for additional apartment units and the expansion and improvements of the parking area. Our office recommends that all items listed above be waived with the exception of items 3B, 3C, and number 26. Community impact statement and traffic impact shall be submitted to the planning department office since the use is not permitted in the zone and was previously granted a use waiver, use variance. The community impact and traffic impact are therefore critical in the evaluation of existing and proposed use. The applicant should indicate any impacts the expansion of the one would have on the schools, traffic, et cetera. Additionally, the applicant shall submit a statement as to the status of other approvals to indicate any necessary approvals by any other agencies such as NJDOT or OBMUA. Applicant should be advised that the waiving of any completeness waivers does not constitute approval of any portion of the application, and that any information found to be necessary during the review process must be supplied. I would assume, Counselor, you're representing the applicant. I have Mr. Alfieri on here, but you must work with Mr. Alfieri.
Yes, I do.
For the record.
My name is Catherine Kim.
It should be green.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it okay now?
Yep.
Wow. Good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Catherine.
Good evening. Uh, thank you so much. My name is Catherine Kim from Cleary, Juke, Colby, Alfieri, and Jacobs, on behalf of the applicant, OBNJ LLC. Um, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Um, we have no issues with, um, providing the community impact statement, the traffic impact, and the statement of the status of the other approvals. I was just wondering, um, would it be possible if we could proceed with, uh, the completion review while we prepare this before a set date?
We, we typically require those before, uh, we deem you complete and assign you a date. So those would be required prior.
Okay, not, not a problem. Um, and the statement of status of other approvals, would that be okay if some of them is?
Yes, there is a page in the application form, just indicate that you have applied and a date when you've applied, and that's pretty much, uh, it for, uh, completion purposes.
Okay, that, we can work with that.
Yes. Ms. Kim?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Sawant, any, uh, comments on the, uh, waiver?
No.
You've just stated?
I think be a good.
Okay. Board members, you've heard the application for the waiver and the suggestion of the planner. Uh, is someone, uh, in favor of moving that waiver, please?
I'll move it.
Mr. Stoner, is there a second?
Connor, I'll second.
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
This is not waiving the traffic impact statement. Do I have the other two? This is just on the other waivers?
Just what was stated. Uh, the, the ones that are going to be kept are numbers?
A.
Three B, three C, and twenty-six.
Those are the ones that we're gonna take care of, address.
Correct. That's gonna be, that's, you're going to take care of those.
Those are gonna be sent.
Correct.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. I was thinking about it myself. I don't know. No. Thank you for your appearance.
Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good evening. All right, we'll move right to the, uh, first application. That's, uh, eleven dash twenty-two Z, Charles Goodwin. This is, uh, medium-density, uh, residential R fifteen. This is Block One One Zero 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 Point One Six, Lot Seventeen, located four-three-eight-four Route Five Sixteen. This is for a home addition requiring C and D variance. Mr. Goodwin, you, you can come right up and sit there. However, before you do so, the board attorney's gonna swear you in. Is anybody else gonna testify tonight? Go ahead, sir. Mr. Clancy?
Could you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth and the whole truth? Okay, you can have a seat.
Please be seated, sir. We basically know that you've submitted plans to us that you wanna make a improvement, I guess, or an addition to your home. When you do that, I'm su, I'm assuming you're not, uh, you're not, uh, represented by an attorney, correct?
No.
So, uh, the board requires a, we're not going to have a transcript because of the fact there's no stenographer here. So, Mr. Clancy would probably warn you that you can waive your rights, or you can wait and get a tran, uh, get a, uh, stenographer to come in.
Correct.
Because there'll be no written, if you were denied, you wouldn't have a written transcript. So those are the regulations, the board. The choice of that, you can waive that right. Mr. Clancy?
That's correct.
I understand.
So, uh, you can proceed with it, but I would just warn you that there are certain proofs that you're gonna have to put on the record because this is a, uh, my recollections from reading, this is a, a, a D-four, uh, floor area ratio issue, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, so you're gonna have to put certain proofs on the record. So I would like you to do that. The board attorney really can't help you, but he may ask some questions to elicit some comments. All right?
Right, and it, just so you're clear too, a denial, I believe, goes to an appeal at the Superior Court?
It would, it would, it would be, he could appeal to the Township Council first if he so chooses, and then he could appeal to the, uh, the district, uh, to the Superior Court.
Aye. Understood.
All right, so I don't wanna scare you, but
Yeah, well, you scared me a little bit.
No, no, we're, everybody here, except for this man, he's an attorney.
Aye.
The two ladies on the end are professionals that work for the township. We're citizen volunteers here to hear this application.
Aye.
We'd, we'd like to help you if we can. We're bound by certain regulations and laws, too.
Understood.
So proceed at your own, and just tell us what's going on, where you live, uh, what you're gonna do, why you need to do that, how it's, how it's gonna affect your, your, your living status.
Yeah, it, we would like to make an addition to the home so we can now park our cars in the garage, so I don't have to shovel snow any longer. But so it's more of a quality of life change for us. We'd like to, uh, in addition to putting the garage on, we'd like to have another bedroom suite with a, uh, a better bathroom and laundry room for us. And we'd also want to go up so I can work at home if I have the space, so allow me the space to work at home.
Why don't you tell the board, uh, I believe you live in Lake Ridge, right?
I do.
Okay, so for those board members who would understand where Lake Ridge is, it's at the end of Five Sixteen, just before you go over Lefferts Lake. So, uh, your house is on the left-hand side.
It's on the left.
It's the second lot in.
Yes, it's the third lot in.
Third, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it faces Five Sixteen. There's the grass island between our home and.
So, I guess everyone's familiar where Lake Ridge is, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you got a basic idea where the home is. And what's the square footage of your house now, sir? Well, describe it.
Our house is a, a Levitt Ranch home, um, three-bedroom, two-bath home. Uh, the garage, you know, all the homes there are on slab, so we have no storage space. So we purchased the home in nineteen ninety-one, and we've never been able to use our garage. Um, so now that we're getting older, and we don't ever plan on leaving our home either, uh, so we'd like to just make some quality and life changes for ourselves, uh, by having this addition on our home, and allow me the opportunity to work at home, which I can work at home.
When you say work at home, oh, you're some sort of a professional who does work, not, not construction or anything, you're not a trade.
CPA.
Okay.
And it's just me, and, uh, most of my clients are Europeans with, uh, US subsidiaries, and I do counter, um, client accounting services and tax compliance, and I can do all this at home. I just need space, uh, in order to do that. And I don't ever plan on retiring. I turn sixty-seven next month, and I will probably continue to always work. And, uh, so again, I say it's a quality of life change. It is. It'll allow me to work at home.
Okay, give me one second.
The ladies in the back are asking me to get a little closer to the mic.
Aye. Should I say test?
The reason that I stopped, sir, is you put something on the record, um, that gave rise to me thinking that you're gonna have a home office there. And if you're going to use that as a CPA office, that rises to a new level of applica, uh, of, uh, conditions, because it's a conditional use, um, that you would have to, your application would be different. Um, to be fair to you before you put anything else on the record, if you're, right now, there's five people here tonight. You need, uh, for any D variances, you would need five positive votes.
Understood, yeah.
Uh, normally, there would be nine members. Two of them would be alternate seven voting. So you would need fi, you would need a supermajority on, on a D variance, which would be five-two. You would be okay. If you don't get all five votes on this matter, you can't bring it back again like that.
Aye.
You'd be, you'd be, um, what's the word I'm looking?
It would, it would only, the only available remedy would be appeal.
Right, right. So you couldn't, if you're gonna do that, there's a way to do it, and it, you could seek permission to do it. But what you're saying now is you haven't applied for that, and that's not what this application says. So I don't want you to get in too much and put things on the record right now that might harm your case.
Understood.
So if you're gonna use.
I'm just a, a sole practitioner. It's just myself.
No, I understand that, but then there's two uses. Then there's a house and an office.
Well, aren't you allowed to have a home office?
I'm not an attorney, sir, but I know that there's a difference. And yes, I personally have an office where I pay my bills, but I don't run a business out of. That's the difference.
And that's a, that type of thing is, is a, is a different type of use. It's a, in your, in your particular area, it's actually a conditional use. But it changes some of the notice that's involved, uh, which wouldn't be compliant with, um, what we have in front of us at the moment.
If you just wait for a moment, sir, uh, Mr. McGowan, I think wants to speak to you. So off the record, turn the mic off, please.
Sure.
If it goes green, it's good.
Just in an effort to, to hear, you know, what the board is saying, the board is correct, and I wanted to help him understand what, uh, the issues are.
Thank you, Mr. Yeah.
He, he needs a workspace, uh, and he calls it his home office. He's gonna have an office air, work area within his home, from what he's explaining to me. He has no clients coming to it. This is not gonna be an office open to any, uh, you know, public or, or any clients. He does all of his work remote. You go to the clients if you have, have things to discuss with the clients?
I do. I have.
He would not be entertaining clients in his home.
No.
No.
Do you, do you have an office address, which is your home address, or no?
It will be my home address. I currently have space that, because I can't work at home, and now, because I don't have the space. But
I'm marking you down for two pro bono.
How is it that you're going to handle, uh, mail and, uh, communications for your business?
A P.O. box, yes. Is that a good answer?
Uh, okay, yeah, that's, no, I understand. I have to just check before I, I wanna speak to the planner, and I wanna speak to, I want the planner to wave in anyway. Okay, the fact that you're not having clients there, the fact that you're merely using it for your own personal workspace that you happen to take work and do, but you're not gonna entertain any clients, you're not gonna advertise that that's a place to come and get, uh, uh, accounting work done.
No.
Okay. Board members, you understand that? Okay. So continue. Tell me, tell us about, uh, we saw some plans, uh.
My, my plans I'm actually happy with. We, again, and what was important to me was the aesthetics of the house to do this. And I think I, I came up with some really nice-looking plans. So, yeah, it's an update to my house because over the garage, we're going up with the, another floor, but not eight walls, only five-foot walls with a cathedral ceiling. We're having French doors on the front and the back. It'll be one big room up there. Um, I think aesthetically, it's gonna look pleasing. I would never do anything that wouldn't be pleasing to my neighbors. That's really important to us. My house is my trophy. I mean, we take a lot of pride in it. If you drive by my house now, you'll see things are blooming, and it looks nice. And we plan on keeping it like that, uh, for as long as we live, and, you know, that's our plan.
Tell you what I'm gonna do, and I'll help you out here. Uh, there's certain things that the planner's gonna ask you, I believe, first about your submission.
Aye.
And then Counselor may have some questions. Then we'll ask the board if they have any questions, and then we'll see how we're proceeding, okay?
Aye.
Ms. Sawant. Ms. Sawant is the township planner.
Hi. Hi.
Hi. Um, Mr. Goodwin, just to help you, because you're asking for a D-four, uh, variance, which is floor area. You are required to provide certain proofs to, so to help you testify and provide those proofs so that the board can make an informed decision. I'm just gonna ask you some questions. Um, what is the existing size of your home?
In square footage, I really
Roughly.
Maybe eighteen hundred, maybe.
And, um, the proposed house?
Well, if we take off
I'll give you the answer.
Twenty by three, we take off sixteen hundred, six hundred square feet, and I think we're gonna, the structure itself is gonna be twenty by fifty, so that'd be two thousand square feet up and lower. Yeah, so
So
Let me put it at about thirty-eight hundred square feet?
No, it's thirty-one a hundred square feet roughly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So have you, um, looked at other homes, uh, within your neighborhood? And if you have to, um, visualize your house against the other homes in the neighborhood, uh, how would you describe it?
Well, the two
Is it larger? Is it smaller?
We are the smallest of the three homes on my little street there. We're the smallest one. So I, again, I don't think I'm taking away or making something not attractive.
So let me rephrase the question. You are currently the smallest on your street. However, with the addition, what would you say, how is your proposed home going to be, uh, in, in comparison to your neighbor's homes?
Well, my next-door neighbor's home, I think, is around three thousand square feet. I'm not sure. It's a framing hand. Maybe you would know.
So, um, when I was reviewing your application, I did go through the tax records, and, uh, I went through at least the, the block which you are in. I went to review the size of the homes within the block. And, um, the zone allows you to have point one-nine floor area ratio.
I read that, yes.
Correct? And you're proposing point two, uh, point two-six, I, I believe, give me one second. Point two-two-six. Um, every other home, and what, a floor area ratio is nothing but the square footage of the home over the lot size. So when I reviewed other homes in the neighborhood, none of the homes are even close to point one-nine, which tells me that most of those homes are lesser, much lesser than three thousand, uh, square feet. What that tells me is your proposed home is going to be larger than, um, the other homes in the neighborhood. Is there anything else you're offering on your property to, um, mitigate any negative impacts? What I mean by negative impacts is, since your house is going to be bigger, are you planting any screening on the side? Are you doing any landscaping, or is there anything that you're doing on the site to improve it?
Well, I'm always putting new landscaping in. I do all my own landscaping, so I'm always doing that. I don't really know what negative impact I would be causing.
So, uh, the question is, because when you're asking for any D variances, you have to prove that the benefits of the project outweigh any detriments, meaning your bigger home, if it is going to negatively impact the neighbors, what are you doing to mitigate that, uh, negative impacts? And I just wanted to check if you were adding any landscaping, anything to improve the property?
Well, again, I'm always adding landscaping to my property.
Sure.
Trees. We just had three trees that were dead removed today in the back, uh, that we'll be replacing, uh, with that. And if you came over and visited my property, you'd see, we're actually like to make it like a big garden. So I think aesthetically, the property So, I think aesthetically, the property, if you allow me to do the extension, will be pleasing.
Okay.
I, I really don't see any negative impact, and, and most of the house itself is gonna be built out onto my driveway. It's there already.
Sure.
So, I don't, I, I can't think of anything negative. I've spoken with my neighbors, they're all happy for me, and I've shown them some of the plans.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Clancy? You will. There'll be a public portion. Will you be, let me ask you, you gonna put any, maybe arborvitae's in between the, this, your closest neighbors are on both sides, right? What, what is there right now in between?
Well, and I have a fence on the back part of the yard, and I do have arborvitae's-
Okay.
-in, inside my backyard. I have pine trees on, between my neighbors on one side. My other side, I also have pine trees with cherry laurels there also. We like our privacy, too. I'm trying to get some nice plants to grow up between our house and 516, so, you know, it'd be nicer for us not to see all the traffic coming by. I, I think overall, you know, again, aesthetically, it's gonna be much nicer to look at than it is now.
I'm just reading some of the...
But I, but more importantly, as I said, my wife and I take a lot of pride in our home. We, we purchased our home in 1991. We don't ever plan on leaving our home, and this'll make it much more, much better for when our family comes over to visit with us. I mean, it's, you know, later on in life, if we need some health assistance, it'll all offer that as well.
I'm not speaking bad against your application, sir. I'm merely just trying to elicit some, some comments.
No, I understand.
I'm looking at the, the rear yard, it's a forty-foot requirement, existing seventeen, proposed thirty-three. We'll need a variance for that, and combined side yard has just kinda come up short by about four and a half, almost four and a half feet. And the, you have, I don't, minimum side yard, you have, you're good, you're, you're, it's fifteen, you were, you were existing at fourteen-six, so it's pre-existing, non-conforming.
That is correct. Chairman, can I, can I ask one question?
Go ahead, Ms. Wong.
So, Mr. Goodman, have you thought about reducing the, the addition, so that the floor area or the structure becomes consistent with your neighbor's homes? Have you made any attempts?
Well, first of all, the garage requires at least twenty feet, right? So, we don't want, we can't cut back on bringing that twenty feet out on the front. And the back going out eight feet will allow us plenty of space to increase the size of our laundry room and have a new bathroom. So, no, I haven't thought of reducing it down.
You were in front of the board previously, too, right?
We were here a few years ago, for zoning, for a back porch we put onto the house. I don't know if you can see it, but it really came out nice, and our reason was that was with, when all the family and the kids were over during the summer, we could all eat together on the back porch, and we've gotten just many compliments on it. My neighbor behind me loves it. He was just up today, and we're showing him things we've done at our house. He has a, a similar ranch, and he's making changes to his.
You did a nice job, 'cause I was here, I was sitting here in eighteen when you, when you applied for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it all came out really nice.
If, if it be necessary to put some more plantings in, would, would you agree to do so?
Oh, definitely. I, my goal in our property is reduce the grass down to a minimum, so that it takes me only an hour to cut my yard. I've had that goal since we purchased the property.
Mr. Goodman, let, let me do something. Let me go to the rest of the board members, we'll see what kind of questions they have, okay? If they have any, all right? I'll start on my left-hand side, Mr. Scogna.
I visited the home today. It's beautiful home.
Thank you.
Actually, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stone, or anything?
No.
Mr. Connor?
None.
Ms. Andrews?
I visited the home. It is quite lovely, and what I did notice of the three homes that are there, I know they said, the, the first one coming in, if you're coming in from this way, they have another story. They are a two-story home.
Yes.
The one next door is a chiropractic, it's a flat one, and then there's yours.
Yes.
So, if you did add another one, it would just be higher, lower, higher, because there already is, it seems, the landscaping is magnificent.
Thank you.
It's, it's quite beautiful. It's a lovely, lovely, lovely home. If I were in the market, I'd buy it.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wong, you have anything else?
Nope, I don't.
You're not weighing in on anything, are you? Okay. Let me go to the public, see what they have to say, if there is any, okay? So, I'm gonna open this matter up. It's located at twenty-two Oak, I'm sorry, four-three-eight-four, Route 516. Ma'am, you wanna speak on this matter?
Yes.
I'm gonna ask you to come up directly to the microphone. The board attorney's gonna swear you in.
Okay.
Can you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Put your hand down.
Okay, I'm Phyllis Brooks. I live at Four Apple Tree Drive. My property sides, his house sides my back, okay? I have some questions. He said it's a three-bedroom house.
Stand a little closer to the microphone.
He said it's a three-bedroom house. All ranches in Lakewood are four bedrooms, okay? I wanna know why the garage is not usable. There is a two-car garage, so I wanna know why they're adding another garage, what the need is.
Wait, wait, let me, let him answer that first, and then if you have anything else, we can continue.
Okay.
So, you wanna know, is there, is yours a four-bedroom home?
I think when they built the Lakewood, they may have, our house may have been one of the models. All the, I, the ranches in that neighborhood, the front part of the house is two bedrooms. Our bedroom is always just one, so it was always, you know, it stretches across the front of the house versus broken into two. It was always-
It was already existing when you moved in, right?
Yeah, it was.
Do you think anybody did any interior construction?
I think-
No, there wasn't. They were, they were told that they, that that was the model home.
No.
Okay, so I, I-
All right, and how about the garage?
The garage is just loaded with our things.
That's what I assumed. Okay. He's, it's storage. He's usually got a storage, because there's no basement.
Right. None of our houses have basements.
Step closer to the, step closer to the mic.
The models were across the street. My house, the Dodenhoff's house, and their three houses, the ones on the, on the top there, are all, were all built with the parking lots for the models for Lakewood and Lakewood West. When they finished with Lakewood West and Levitt was building Monmouth Heights, he built our houses. Okay, so those five houses are the newest houses in Lakewood. Okay? The house on the end that you said was high, that's the Colonial, same house I have, four bedrooms. Okay? The one in the middle is the framing ham, the same as hers. Okay, so, what you call it, it's, and the landscaping on my side, he has planted ivy, which has overtaken my landscaping, okay, and has run down between our houses, too.
Okay. You're, just for the board's certification, and so I'm straight, if I were in the front of his house, you're behind him?
Yeah, if you look at that-
Yep.
-where all those trees are, you can't see my house. The white house that you see next to it is Mrs. Dodenhoff's house. I have the four-bedroom Colonial, which sides 516.
So, Ms. Lee, would you point to hers?
That one straight on the top is the framing ham, the five-
That's you?
No. Ham, the five-
That's you?
No. You can't see my house. If you move this over, no, no. Get rid of where you have the map, the map on the side. Okay, there's, see that big tree and that whole side?
Yeah.
My house is in front of that. You can't see me.
I see.
You can see a little corner of my house.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
All right, so-
I thought it was Ms. Perry's house.
Were you saying that was Ms. Perry's?
Perry was my husband.
Oh, okay.
Perry was my husband.
All right, so he, he's adjacent to you, correct?
His side of the house.
Yes.
Yeah, it's adjacent to me.
Would, if, if, if we were to approve this, would, would you look to have that ivy taken away?
Oh, definitely.
Okay. Do you, do you stand opposed to the application on its merits, or just certain things that you would like done?
Well, I just think that it's, you know, it's, it's gonna ruin the, the, the look of Lakewood. I mean, like you said, you know, we don't have any other house that's gonna look that way. You know? And there's not that much property, so, I mean, I don't, you know...
Well, I think he said he's coming out twenty on the front and eight on the back, correct?
Well, if he comes out on the front, he's not gonna have any driveway.
Let's go to the garage.
That's not true.
Would there still be driveway left, sir?
I'm sorry?
Will there still be driveway left?
Quite a bit. My driveway's very long, as you can see. With regards to the ivy, that ivy was there when we first moved there. I, I didn't know it was Ms. Perry. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't know your, your name was Ms. Brooks. But the lady next door to her once, twenty-five years ago, maybe, complained to me about the grove, the ivy growing in her yard, and I explained to her then, it was there when I got there. Do I like the ivy coverage? Yes, it's beautiful. I have a lot of it on my property, but it's difficult to manage. You have to manage it. I didn't purposely plant anything between our homes, Ms. Brooks, at all. I did plant some pine trees behind, between our homes, and the cherry laurel is planted there now, just to give us more privacy.
Ms. Brooks, would you, would you agree that, that it does screen your yard, that you don't, you, you have that privacy? You may not like ivy itself, but does it, does it-
No, I, well, because I have plantings that go across that back, too.
Okay.
The whole back corner is mine.
All right.
I just had-
She's, her legs?
... my property survey.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, to make sure that, you know, what's mine is mine, because the old one was like over fifty years old.
Okay, but it does provide a screen for you and privacy for your, for your house.
Uh, I, no, I see the whole side of his house.
Okay. All right.
I see the whole side of it.
You have any other comments or questions you wanna direct to the board at this point?
No.
Okay. Ma'am, did you wanna come up? Okay. Same thing's gonna apply, ma'am, if you'd come up, step next, directly in front of the microphone. The board attorney will swear you in.
Raise your right hand, thank you. Do you swear any of the testimony that you provide tonight will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Okay, you can put your hand down, thank you. What's your name?
I, um...
Your name, ma'am, and where you live?
I'm Barbara Dodenhoff. I live at Eight Apple Tree Drive.
Could you spell your last name, please? Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
And I'm, I'm not here particularly against the house.
Right.
What I'm against is what the house now is doing to my yard. If you put in a bigger house, am I gonna have more of a mess? The, the huge pine trees that are in, in my backyard on his side of his fence, so many of them are now hanging into my yard, pieces that are broken, that are old, or alive, and just swinging in my backyard. You see the white, the white house?
The white what?
The white roof, yeah.
That's you?
That's me, yeah. And, and it's true-
I want the board to be able to see.
The ivy has, really has taken over. There are hedges on both sides of the lawn that are now just full of ivy, and it's taken away a lot of my yard in the back. I'm not in a position to have a gardener come in and rip all that out, because then it means soil coming in, seed being planted, that's too expensive for me to do. So, you know, I feel if you're not taking care of that, what's gonna happen next?
Okay, that's a valid point. Could you tell me how long you've lived there?
Um, over forty years. I'd say maybe, yeah, closer to fifty, 'cause I'm eighty-nine, and I was in there when I was about forty.
You don't have to reveal your age, 'cause you don't look it, I can tell you that.
Oh, I, last week-
I would've lost the bet, I'll tell you.
-my birthday. Yeah, I'd say about forty-nine years.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else you wanna tell the board?
No.
Well, thank you for your coming up and providing those comments. Would you feel better if some of that was taken care of, that landscaping?
Yeah.
And cleaned up?
I'll tell you why, because I would like soon-
Move up to the microphone.
I'll tell you why, because I'd like soon at my age to be looking to sell my home.
Understood.
And that's, that's a detriment right now.
Okay. All right, thank you, but I hope you don't move out of town, we want you to stay.
Oh, no. I'm afraid you don't accommodate eighty-nine-year-old people in Holbrook.
We'll work on that. Thank you very much.
Can I comment?
Back to you, sir.
Um, my, I have a-
Oh, wait a minute, one more thing. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard? I'm gonna close the public portion. Go ahead, sir.
I have a fence on my property along.
Let me ask you this.
I believe there's-
So, we, we don't, I don't, I don't wanna beat you up, and, and I wanna try and help you if I can. Would you be in agreement, if this board were to approve this? And I've heard from two people who personally went and saw your house, who say it's beautiful, and one wanted to buy it if, if they were interested. Would you be a good neighbor and agree to clean up whatever they're talking about? I haven't been in your backyard, I don't know. Mr. Clancy, is there some way we could, if the board were to agree, some way we could work that into a, the resolution?
I believe you could put it on as a condition, as part of the improvement to the rear of the yard, as a landscape improvement for the, the addition.
Mm-hmm.
Cleaning up the backyard. I think that would be agreeable as a condition.
Ms. Wong?
Ms., Mr. Clancy, can we, can we clarify? If the pine trees are not on the applicant's property, then what happens?
It's, I don't wanna dispute what she's saying.
Okay, well, no, we don't wanna argue either, but I don't have the survey in front of me.
Yeah, if you look at the, her yard, you'll see that those trees are on her side, and you'll also notice that I keep the, the ivy cut off my fence, and I have to go on that side of the fence to keep it cut. So, all that ivy was there when I bought the house, was in her yard. She approached me all the years ago, saying that to me, and I said, "Listen, I didn't plant it here, and it actually looks nice." I guess it's a difference of opinion. It looks nice, goes on that hillside by her house, it's all, nothing will grow under there, because the trees are there, it's all-
All right, well, I, I, listen, I want, I certainly wanna help you try and get what you wanna do, but I also would like you to be a good neighbor at the same time and satisfy others.
I'm, if it would identify her, I can take all the ivy out on her side of that fence.
Would you agree to agree, anyway?
Oh, sure.
Okay. And, and Ms. Brooks and Ms. Doganhoff, would that be at least a, a fair commitment from another neighbor? fair commitment from another neighbor? Would-
If they could show me what they want me to do-
Okay, well, let's deal with one thing at a time. But you would agree, correct?
Of course.
And we're going to make that part of the resolution if we approve it.
It's very important for me to please my neighbors.
I have one other question of you. This is, you're under Homeowners Association, right?
Yes.
Do you have written, do you need a permission, do you need permission for this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Did you apply?
They-
Uh, it, it, you can go confer with, I assume that's your wife?
Yeah, yeah.
But she can't testify from the, from the, from there. We can't allow that. You can, if she wants to be sworn, she can come forward.
No, she's, she's good.
I don't know what you're saying, if you want to go talk to her.
If there's something we need to-
Or do you want to just talk to her?
You want to just go talk to her and see what she's saying? I, I, we can't take it on the record from her. What you see up there, ladies, the two ladies that testified, that's a survey, you see that, right? Okay. If you would like a copy of that, you could stop by the zoning office, uh, Mr. Want would be happy to give you a copy, so you know where the lot line is. And by the way, just because a tree is there or something grew, it may not be your land or it may be your land, but you have to see what the actual lot line is, okay? So, if you want to talk to them at a later time, they'll gladly give you a copy of that. All right? All right. Now, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
Oh, my wife has just asked me about the, uh, the green cards, the return receipts that we had to mail out to all the neighbors and the receipts and such.
Right, right, that's for notification, but what about your Homeowners Association?
I'm not aware of anything.
Or the resolution, right?
Uh, we had, we added the back porch on.
If, I, you can't, you have to come up, ma'am. You can't hear that.
Hold on.
Hold on.
Right, the only notice I received was this.
Right, that's, that's-
That's the only reason I know that this is happening.
Yeah, that's a requirement.
He never spoke to me, I never got a green card, nothing, just this. Remember, he said he spoke to me.
Green cards are the return cards. Well, you have to send them certified so the person-
Oh, that, yeah.
Yes, that's a requirement.
Yeah, so I got this.
So, you've been, yeah, you've been duly notified in the 200-foot circle.
And that's the only, the only way I knew about this.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, if we approve, we're going to have to make part of the resolution that if the, if the, with the Homeowners, Homeowners Association approval, correct?
Correct.
Uh, final comments over here, this is a D4, so it's floor area ratio, we know what it's about. If anybody has any problems, don't forget we have a five, we only have five people here tonight. So, I, I would want to get it on the record now.
So, what if the tree, is the tree actually on his property?
Well, again, I don't, I haven't visited, that's why I offered them a copy of the survey, but if, if it isn't, then it would be, uh, one of the ladies there, whoever lives behind him. If it is on his property, then it would be his responsibility to clean it up.
So, that's what the condition is going to be?
Yes, yes.
Okay, it's not on his property?
If it's, then, then it's not, he can't do something that, on somebody else's property.
There's, it's four Douglas firs, they're probably 50, 60 years old. Uh, she is correct, they're actually nice-looking trees. One of them is on this side of the fence on my property, the other three on her side.
Okay.
So, I, I don't understand where she's coming from.
Okay. That's why I'm offering them a copy of the survey, so they can-
Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay, and we can, you can, anything else, Mr. Stoner? Mr. Connor?
Yeah, based on the, um, I guess the public comments and the conditions we're going to put in place, anything that's on your property, you clean up, and the HOA approval, which we didn't know about, but now we'll put in the conditions, I'm comfortable.
Ms. Andrews?
Absolutely, the Homeowners Association, I don't know that your mic's on.
Yes, as long as the conditions are met, the Homeowners Association is in favor of it and that the cleanup of whatever property, things that are overlapping on their property, then I, then-
They don't weigh in on it other than whether they approve it.
Exactly, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, great.
Much as I love it, the Home-
I did close the public portion, but I'll, I'll listen to your comment.
Mrs. Donhoff couldn't get up. Uh, she says the trees that she's talking about are inside his fence.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, uh, public portion's closed, final comments, anything else you want to tell us?
No, sir, and this is a total surprise.
We have a bulk variance on this too, is it?
Two neighbors that, uh, obviously we've never really had-
It's the pre-existing, uh, it's the pre-existing side yard, right? Okay.
And the ivy, personally, if I was in their property, it's-
I'd just like to see you be good neighbors, so-
Yeah, 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 I understand, and we think we are.
Mr. McGowan, you're pro bono, what are you doing?
Just, just a point of clarification, is he going to be required to get the Homeowners Association approval in any event, or only if it's required under the homeowner document?
Uh, if it's required under the homeowner's document, he's going to, he's going to need one. We've had Lakewood applications, I've had, seen many of them come past, and they would at least get notification that, you know, they don't have a, there was a, uh, one across the street where it was a, uh, what do you call it? Uh, it was a big runoff, uh, and they wanted to put some in, but they had to get at least notification to the, from the Homeowners Association, so-
He only has to reply with what their requirements are?
Correct.
He doesn't have to firmly get an approval?
Correct.
Okay.
Good, Mr. Clancy? All right. Uh, board members, we've heard this for, uh, a good while now, I don't think there's much more to say. Uh, this would require a D floor, uh, D4 floor area ratio, it's going, I think, from 1.9 to 2.226? I don't have it up on my screen. Is it 2.26, Jim?
2.26.
2.226. So, uh, we have, if, if that survives, then we'll go to the bulk variance. Someone in favor of moving the, uh, D4?
Scott, now move it.
Connor, second.
Move to the second roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
I'm going to say yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
With the conditions that you're going to be a good neighbor and clean up anything that is your responsibility, I say yes. Okay? For the, uh, bulk variance, the, uh, side yard, I'll move it, is there a second? Ms. Andrews, roll call, please, on the C.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, you've been approved.
Thanks.
Building permits, you have to see them next. Not Ms. C, but, well, she, well, you can probably stop by and see her.
This man has helped me through this whole process.
Right, next, you won't get a-
Chairman, there's a rear yard setback variance.
I'm sorry, is it a rear end and side?
Ri- yes, it's side combined and rear.
Okay, on the bulks, uh, we would, we could have just put them all together. I'm going to take one more vote. I said side, it's rear and combined. I'll move it, is there a second?
One second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Now you're approved. Your resolution won't come until next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Next meeting is in two weeks. We'll have it by then.
No.
Uh, you're not doing anything, come on, stop by.
We will, our office will-
We'll notify you.
-tell you once the resolution is ready.
You don't have to come, sir. I was just inviting you.
I'm going to be in the hospital.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that. Good luck on your improvement.
Thank you.
All right. And now, Mr. McGowan will be on the clock.
I'm on the clock.
Oh, I forgot. This is matter 83-2020Z, 2G Port Farm Road LLC. This is a low-medium density residential R20 zone, this is block 5,000, lot 20, Port Farm Road, 42 residential, uh, that's 42-unit residential subdivision, a major and preliminary final, uh, subdivision. As some of the board will recall, this is a bifurcated application. Robert McGowan's representing the applicant, Mr. McGowan.
Good evening, good evening, members of the board, professionals. Um, I am here, uh, representing, uh, the applicant, uh, this is our third appearance. Um, the first appearance, we presented a whole concept plan and, uh, and that was for, uh, a total of 40 units. Um, and, you know, we heard the comments of the board, we considered the comments from the professionals and the concerns expressed, we reduced the size of the development to 35 units. Um, that was our second appearance, and at that second appearance, uh, we did bifurcate, so that we were looking only to have the board address the issues as to the variances we needed, the variances we needed. It's, it's zone single-family, even though the area is developed both next to us and across the street in, in more dense, uh, development. And in fact, the development next to us is older, but obviously, because it exists, and it, but similar in that it's, uh, two-family units, and that's what we're proposing on this site. Um, so, when we came back, we, we addressed the, the use, uh, duplexes versus single-family, we addressed the density, obviously, uh, we're clustering it and therefore the density is greater, and we also addressed the floor area ratio, which is similar to the application that you just heard, that was his issue. Uh, the board was satisfied with what we presented and graciously granted us the variance, the use variances that we needed. Uh, we had directions still to go back and do away with, one of our proposals was that we would have multifamily units to serve the affordable, uh, quotient within the development. Um, there was, uh, particularly from your planner, Vina, uh, Vina was concerned that she believes that the true spirit, and she's not wrong, I mean, the, the, the true spirit of the affordable housing is to try to make it as similar as possible, so that it is truly not only integrated, meaning it's dealt into the deck, but that it looks like the rest of the cards of the deck to the extent possible. The extent possible is, is part of the key wording, however, uh, because, uh, it's, it is a financial burden on the developer to do that, uh, and the project has to be feasible at the end of it. So, although we all have ultimate goals that we try to achieve, um, you can't always get to the ultimate goal. So, you get to, hopefully, something close to it that is good and better than what we have. Um, and that's what we're going to be talking about tonight, uh, and we're not going to be able to finish our application tonight. Uh, first of all, you know, only have five members, I don't think, I think there are a couple of you that may not have heard the transcripts or the previous things, so you're going to need a chance to find out what happened before, uh, and verify what I'm telling you. So, we will be back, we're going to address tonight the engineering comments in particular, uh, and then we're going to come back and address the planning comments and the affordable housing considerations and those kind of things. So, with me tonight is our engineer, and if I cannot have him come in, up and be sworn in. Also with us tonight is John Vincenti, who is, uh, the representative of the owner and, and the project manager.
Sir, you raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Okay, state your name for the record, please.
Kevin Shelley.
Mr. Shelley, your professional affiliation is?
I am the owner of Shorepoint Engineering, I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey since 2012. My license is current and in good standing.
And you've testified before this board before, as I remember.
I have.
Okay, we accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you.
Let me just do a little housekeeping, we, we did re-notice for this meeting, uh, so that, uh, I believe that was accepted. Uh, we recognize that we have three review letters that have been submitted in between the last time we were here, which was last summer, uh, and now, it was almost, it was 11 months ago when we were here. Um, we have one letter in from the assistant construction official, uh, who finds our application to be satisfactory and has some comments which we acknowledge. Uh, we have a letter in from Environmental Resolutions having to do with traffic concerns, and then we have the usual joint letter, uh, that comes in from both Nicole and from Vina. Uh, we're going to, Kevin's going to testify about, uh, the engineering aspects and then , uh, direct his comments to Nicole's comments. Thank you.
Everybody can see, is there a better spot you want me to put the, uh-
You're good.
Can I mark the, uh, rendering? Uh, this is a colored rendering of the site plans that were submitted, um, as part of the application package, I can mark this as exhibit A1.
Um, because this is a contin- because this is a continuing application, uh, I, I did not bring with me the list from before, uh, so why don't we do this as A20 and we may have a gap in between the other-
Yeah, I don't remember the exact number either.
Right, so let's start off with A20.
Okay, Mr. Clancy?
As long as we're certain we're not up to 20, I think we're fine.
I don't believe we are.
Um, I will defer. Okay. So, uh, property is located, uh, on the northern side, Port Farm Road, approximately halfway between, uh, Cheesequake Road and Route 9. It is an eight-acre triangularly shaped parcel, uh, that's currently mostly wooded and undeveloped. Uh, the property is located in the R20 zone, as are all surrounding properties off Parf- off Port Farm Road, uh, with the exception of the Route 9 properties. Uh, Brewster Circle, which is a 70-unit duplex development, is located directly to the east of the property, and, uh, the site is located directly across the street from Cedar View Estates. Uh, the applicant proposes to construct 35 residential unit subdivision, which includes 17 duplex units and a single, uh, single-family house. It's an inclusionary development with seven COA units, which would equal 20%, and all units are for sale, not rentals, uh, including the seven affordable units. Um, access to the site comes from Port Farm Road, uh, through two private roadways, uh, Lucy Drive and Lola Drive. Lucy Drive is a 24-foot wide cartway, um, wide enough for two-way vehicular access, and Lola Drive has a 30-foot wide cartway, uh, allowing for on-street parking on either side, uh, in between driveways wherever possible.
Could you put those out, please?
Sure.
Would you, that is a board that hasn't seen this?
Yeah, not a problem. So, this is Lola Drive, uh, as indicated, it's a 30-foot wide road, so there could be parking in between the driveway spaces, uh, where there's at least 23 feet. And Lucy Drive is our secondary access point, uh, for the property, 24-foot wide, uh, located on the eastern end of the site.
Thank you.
Uh, at the end of Lola Drive is a cul-de-sac with a 40-foot radius, which is in accordance with RSIS requirements. Each unit has a two-car garage and a 20-foot driveway, wide enough to park two cars. Uh, and there's a total of 18 guest parking spaces, uh, available for all 35 units, um, which exceeds the RSIS requirement of .5 guest spaces per unit. Uh, seven of those spaces are located on the street along Lola Drive, there's six spaces located on Lucy Drive, and five spaces located at the end of the cul-de-sac, uh, where we are also proposing a top lot for the development. The rear one and a half acres in the back triangular portion of the property, um, will remain undisturbed and will be open space. Uh, trash and recycling will be stored internally within the garages and brought out for curbside pickup. Uh, development's going to be serviced by public water and sewer as well, with new mains being installed on site. Um, in the front of the site, there is, uh, one sand-bottom infiltration basin proposed along Port Farm Road.
Could you point that out?
It's located in the front. The basin has been designed in accordance with the New Jersey Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual. Um, as Mr. McGowan mentioned, we did get a review letter, um, from the engineering department. The letter had indicated that, um, it was their belief that the application would be subject to the 2021 amended stormwater management rules. Um, however, it's, it's our, uh, position that the application was originally submitted to both the township and to the state, uh, for approvals before those rules were effective, um, and will provide follow-up documentation, uh, to the engineering department to, uh, back those claims. Um, but, in the event that the state does determine that the new stormwater management rules apply to the project, uh, we believe that with some minor tweaks to the design, that the project can be, um, slightly modified without any detriment to the plans, there would be no changes in roadways or lot line adjustments, that the application you're hearing and seeing in front of you would remain substantially the same, with some modifications to the basin. Um, there is a proposed 15-foot buffer along the property lines to the east and the west. Um, the buffer to the east is, uh, mainly existing, or it's all existing vegetation, the rear of the property is a retaining wall, we are on the low side of that wall, um, and there, you can see from the exhibit here, there is substantial existing vegetation is substantial existing vegetation in the back of those homes on Brewster Circle. And with the retaining wall, that creates some additional buffering, some vertical separation between the two developments. As you get past, you know, the front portion of our property, we've expanded the existing vegetated buffer. We, during the prior hearings, we heard the comments from the neighbors. We tried to take that into account as part of this updated plan that was submitted. We have at least a 30-foot-wide existing vegetated buffer in the front, which, as you can see, as you get towards the front of the site, there's less of existing wooded area back behind these properties, so we're trying to preserve that to the maximum extent that we can. And to the east of the, or to the west of the property, where there is no existing vegeta, well, there is existing vegetation, but we need to clear it for grading and drainage purposes, we are proposing a 15-foot-wide buffer along the property to the east, and that buffer will be continued all the way through the end, through the back of the property. In the traffic review letter that was provided by Environmental Resolutions, they made two recommendations to the plans pertaining to Lucy Drive. The recommendations were that the pavement width be expanded from 24 feet to 28 feet. And what that would allow would be, it would allow for additional space for what they'll call overflow parking, for on-street parking spaces in the event that the 17 on-street guest spaces are not adequate for the development. As I indicated, we exceed the RSIS requirement for guest parking spaces. We believe there's adequate guest parking available on this property as currently designed. And what that four-foot-wide expansion of this roadway does is it starts cutting into that 30-foot buffer that we're trying to maintain for the neighbors. We're expanding four feet further out, which means that existing tree line goes from 30 feet to 26 feet. One of the other comments is they're also recommending sidewalk be installed on that side of Lucy Drive. Again, that would be a further encroachment into that existing buffer that we're trying to preserve. There's a, there is sidewalk located along the southern portion of that road. It takes you out to Port Farm Road. The sidewalk is looped throughout the site. There's various crosswalks internally to the site, providing adequate means for residents of our community, as well as neighboring communities, to walk through this development and safely be able to cross the street and to use these sidewalks. We strongly disagree with the recommendation that additional sidewalk should be provided there, as again, it's, the negative is, it impacts the neighbors on the Brewster Circle development the most.
Kevin, is, there's like a gray line that goes along here, that indicates the sidewalk that's being proposed?
Correct.
So the sidewalk goes all along the area, past the two families that's here, goes past that, and then this is a cross, there's a slashed white and black, almost like a piano keyboard. That's where you would cross over to join the sidewalk that goes completely all the way around the development. Is that correct?
Correct. As well as sidewalk along the entire frontage on Port Farm Road as well. It picks up the end of the existing sidewalk at the Brewster Circle development and carries it over all the way through the entirety of our frontage.
So that anyone coming out of any of the houses does in fact have sidewalk in front of them, and is, and has the easy accessibility to sidewalk throughout the development and out to Farm Road?
Correct.
Can you talk a little bit about some of the changes, because there are some board members who will, they'll read the transcripts and so forth, but as long as they hear some of the changes that were made. When the plan, the original concept plan was brought to the board, were there houses along this area, this is Lucy Road?
That is Lucy Drive.
Lucy Drive, so, so there were houses in between Lucy and the other existing community, is that correct?
Yes. And originally, we had proposed cul-de-sac developments. We had some conversations and we heard concerns from fire official, as well as neighbors, and we created this looped access drive to create two points in case of an emergency at either one of these exits or entrances, that you would have safe passage for both the residents and emergency services as well. We heard the recommendations to make sure that the cul-de-sac remains, there's no on-street parking within the cul-de-sac. That would prevent fire truck turning capabilities, so we have appropriate signage within the cul-de-sac as well. We tried to listen to all of the comments that we've been provided over the past year and a half or so, since this application was originally submitted, to try to come up with what we believe is the appropriate design for this site.
When it was originally presented, what now shows to be two duplexes, we had multifamily units in that area, did we not?
Yeah, and the corner, there were multifamily townhouse-style units, or stacked flats, where you have a ground floor and an above floor. There were on-street parking spaces or off-street parking spaces versus driveways and garages. And after various conversations and discussions that we've had, the plans have been revised. All the unit, there's 17 duplexes, and as you can see, we have the one single located at the end as part of the use variance and density approval that took place 11 months ago. 35 units was approved. We wish we could make a three-unit duplex, but that's obviously not the way it works. So, you know, we have 17 duplexes and a single at the end.
Just for correction, 35 units were approved. What was approved in the resolution was that we were allowed up to 35 units in the development. All right. Can we, you want to address the engineering comments at this point, or do you have other comments you want to present first?
The variances, or we can go through the?
Oh, no, go ahead.
So, as I indicated, the properties in the R20 zone, and with that, there are different zoning standards than what would apply to a community like this. So there are several variances that are going to be required. Variance is needed for minimum lot area. 20,000 square feet is required, and 3,850 square feet is the minimum proposed. Variance is required for minimum lot width. 100 feet is required, and 34 and 1/2 feet is proposed. Variance for minimum front yard setback, 50 feet is required, and 20 feet is proposed. Side yard setback on one side, 20 feet is the requirement, and 0 feet is proposed as there are duplexes. That would be the shared wall. The side yard setback total, 40 feet is required, and 10 foot is proposed. The rear yard setback, where 50 feet is required and 20 feet is proposed. A minimum landscape ratio, where .55 is required and .40 is proposed. A minimum buffer to residences, where 50 feet is required and 15 feet is proposed. And driveways within the buffer, where 50 feet is required and 30 feet is proposed. There's also a couple.
Now, with those variances, though, the variances that you just recited are what is required as single-family homes?
Correct, for each duplex, or for each unit.
No, no, well, I'm saying, the requirements are under the current zone, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. But, and the variances that we're seeking, how do they compare if the zoning for this allowed duplexes as we are proposing, which we now are permitting because of the use variance? How would those requirements compare with what we're proposing? Are we fairly consistent with what would otherwise be required if this was for this use?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
There's also a couple waivers that are being requested. For minimum parking stall size, 10-foot by 20-foot is required, whereas 9-foot by 18-foot is proposed. That's in accordance with RSIS parking stall sizes. The on-street parking spaces, 10 feet by 23 feet is required, and 7 feet by 23 feet is proposed. Again, that's consistent with the RSIS requirements. The waiver required for the maximum driveway slope, where 6% is the maximum allowed, and we have 17 of these driveways that are proposed slightly above 6%. So about half of the driveways would be slightly exceeding that. Setback from the 100-year water surface elevation of the basin, where 25 feet is required and less than 25 feet is proposed for the units that are located abutting up to the And as I indicated, we'd be requesting waivers from sidewalk from being installed on both sides of Lucy Drive, as well as a waiver from Lucy Drive road design is indicated in the traffic letter, where RSIS would require a 150-foot centerline radius located on the curve of the road, and 30-foot-wide curb radiuses, whereas 100-foot is the centerline radius and 25 feet are the curb radiuses. Any larger radius through that turn creates more of an opportunity for speeding through this development. You know, the wider the turn, the easier it is to go through. When you have tight turns, it makes everybody slow down as they're going through the community. So we believe with the way the property is designed, with this 100-foot centerline radius, that that's the most appropriate design for this community. If it needs to be 150 feet, we can accommodate that, but we don't think that, again, is the most appropriate design for the property. And those are the waivers that we're requesting.
All right. You want to take a look at Nicole's comments then?
Sure.
Hopefully you can address that.
Yeah. A lot of the comments from the engineering review were comments that were originally provided, or provided to us over the course of the year and a half or so, since we've submitted this application. When we resubmitted the application, January, we tried to address as many, all of the comments as we could, and I believe the engineering comments indicate that a lot of them have been addressed, or at least partially addressed, and maybe we need to provide a little more documentation on the final plans. But for the large part, we don't have any concerns or issues agreeing to comply with the engineering comments, with the exception that I've already noted regarding the stormwater management applicability of which rules the application would fall under.
So that to the extent that there are requests that the plans be amended to make notes or to reflect other facts, you'll do that. You have no objection to making any notes or adjustments to the plans as the engineer is requesting, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Such as, for instance, under 2D, the plan will be revised to call out a 20-foot drainage easement to be dedicated to the HOA as an easement.
Not a problem.
One of the comments here, the, well, again, a number of monuments, for instance. You'll put the correct number of monuments on there. Many of these questions have been indicated, has been satisfactorily addressed. One question here on the major subdivision plan, as well as the layout, shows a 15-foot buffer. Testimony should be provided at the public meeting regarding the 15-foot landscape buffer.
Right, and that's what we discussed, the buffer located of existing vegetation adjacent to Brewster Circle, as well as a proposed buffer to the west.
Okay. Documentation, I'll make this representation, because one of the questions is documentation having to do with rights of way and easements and so forth is to be submitted to the engineering department also. Any homeowners' documents or restrictions, those obviously be prepared and submitted for review and approval. Changing, there's a question here, the curb ramp, type 7 and so forth, applicant should consider changing ramps to type 2 or type 4 curb ramps?
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Not a problem. The Belgium block detail located on sheet 14 to 16 can be reduced to 12-inch width, whereas 18-wide was proposed.
Not a problem.
A testimony should be provided to indicate if additional signage will be provided for the proposed landscapes buffer.
There was no additional signage that was anticipated at this time. Again, majority of it is existing vegetation, at least to the east. There would be stipulations in the homeowners' association documents that no additional clearing can be done, you know, by the owners, as well as the proposed landscape buffer in the rear of those yards, that, you know, that landscaping must remain in place, and that'll all be included, but, you know, at this time, there was no additional signage, you know, proposed.
Okay. You testified as to the slope of the driveways, and so one of the questions here is testimony should be provided, clarifying which lots cannot meet the maximum 6% requirement, and why can't you comply?
So there is a substantial amount of grade change across this property, you know, as you walk it, hence why we have a retaining wall located in the back of the property. The way the duplex units are created, I mean, our roadway is only coming up at, I think it's like a 2% slope or 2 and 1/2%, it's not a steep driveway coming up there, because these are duplex units. You can't have one at this elevation and then you're stepping them in the middle. It doesn't create, you know, a uniform building that you can construct. So as one side is coming up at one slope, the other side has to come up at a steeper slope to make sure that they stay consistent in terms of elevations. None of these driveways are on a 20% slope. They're all parkable driveways. We'll gladly provide indication of each one, what the maximum slope is on each one. I believe that they get up to approximately 7 or 8% at the most, and if there is an instance where we can bring one down a couple inches and make it all work internally with the building, you know, we'll gladly reduce as many as we, as we can. But like I said, the topography on the site is challenging, as well as making the duplexes being consistent with the elevations challenging as well.
Under Section 4 grading plan in Stormwater B, the LDO Chapter 25078L4D2E requires 100-year water surface elevation for detention basins to be at least 25 feet from any property line. Note here is that lots 2041, 42, 45, 46, and 2047 don't meet the requirement, and in addition appears lot 2048 may not meet the requirement as well. Can you address those?
Sure. So around the basin, we have plantings. There's also a fence around the basin, and this fence is a demarcation of what this 100-year water surface elevation in the basin would be. Again, this basin's modeled without using any natural infiltration, which is in accordance with what the stormwater rules were when the property was developed. You can see the fence is located more than 25 feet from the houses, but we tried to give these residences as much of a property as we could in the backyard, so that 100-year water surface does get within 25 feet of their property lines, but it is not within 25 feet of the residences where, you know, you're going to have basins backing up into their backyards, up against the houses. That won't happen. So there is instances where the water surface will be closer to the, you know, this would be the only scenario where we have a potential where the water would be closer than 25 feet to a structure, but besides that, you know, it's only just slightly impacting the rear yards of some of these units that, directly adjacent to the basin.
Okay, thank you. The, there's a recommendation here, this is recommendation for E, the applicant should consider a small diameter yard inlets, which can be connected to the CB1A, CBA4A, and CB7A, and for lots, 2012 and 2013, where the drainage wall crosses the multiple lots.
So in the rear of the properties, on the bottom of the plan, what we have, as the grade change is across there, the property drains to the back, we create a landscaper top to keep all of the runoff from our site, on our site, instead of impacting the neighbors. Anything that lands in these side yards comes to the backyards, and we have a drainage swale that takes it all the way out to the street. We've added several inlets in those backyards, every other house or every three houses, to collect that runoff and bring it out to the street. I believe the comment was just maybe add a couple more, rely less on the drainage swales, add a couple additional yard inlets, which, again, we don't have an issue with complying with that. We wanted to create as much usable backyard as we could without additional structures and basins, but if the request is for more inlets, then we'll provide them.
There's in seven, lighting and landscaping, 7D, asks the applicant to confirm that the three lampposts located in the Lola Drive cul-de-sac, lampposts located in the northeast thoroughly corner of the intersection of Lola and Lucy, and the three lampposts located in the vacant portion of Lucy Drive are not in conflict with proposed plannings.
Yeah, we will ensure, we'll do an overlay plan with the lighting and the landscaping together to make sure that there are no conflicts. There's also a comment about additional lighting to make sure that the intersections were adequately lit, potential ordinance, and we'll adjust the light locations to make sure that that's done as well.
Okay. I can address E or represent, make a representation of the board. 7E is the lighting details consist, well, the lighting details consist to a JCPL Municipal Lighting Handbook, which indicates the process of JC and P and L maintaining the equipment, and that's our understanding, correct?
Correct.
The applicant should provide testimony, the HOA will be responsible for the electrical costs. The streets are going to be private. The lights, of course, will become part of the HOA as well. Applicant should testify if the monument sign is proposed to be illuminated.
Yes, there is uplighting as part of the illumination for the monument sign, which is located at the front corner of Lucy Drive.
Okay.
Is there two?
Just one sign.
Okay. Under 8, construction details, G, a note should be added to the plans. You said you're going to add notes. The stormwater, stormwater applications, green infrastructure standards, that you're going to address by providing additional documentation to the engineering office, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. That's all pertaining to the new stormwater rules from March of '21.
I think that's the questions, and of course, Nicole is. I think that's the questions, and of course, the call is here. So if there are any other questions.
It's going to be your only witness tonight, right?
That's our only witness.
I'm going to go once around the bases. We'll stop with the fire marshal, then we'll come across to the, we'll start, we'll, we're going to start with Nicole, and we'll go once around, Tom. You'll have to wait. And we'll go to Mr. Clancy, and then we're going to go to the board and see if we have any questions. Ms. Shapiro.
I think Vina wanted to make a comment about the court reporter.
We don't have a court reporter.
No, I know. We're going to, we'll make a transcript off of the tape that you have.
The YouTube.
This is being recorded.
YouTube.
YouTube. It's on YouTube.
Okay.
And certainly you could use it, but I don't know. I mean, we've made exceptions on Zoom, but in live testimony.
No, I apologize, quite frankly. It's been so long since we've done it remotely. You know, it wasn't, I didn't have one before. And of course, I always have before when we've been here. We will, we will produce a transcript off of this board. And we will have.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
I mean, what's important is, is for the, you know, for those that aren't here, if they want to read it instead of watching it and stuff like that, so.
Sure, absolutely. We will do that.
Certainly, I think we went quick, and I think in some of the cases, I kind of lost you, Mr. Shelley, on, when you were commenting. I just wanted to touch base, that everything, I think, when you were saying you agreed, was good. I think my main point with the easements is you now have this landscape buffer in the back. I think more importantly, there should be a deed restriction in the deeds, as well as the HOA documents that say that they can't cut anything.
Yeah, absolutely.
That retaining wall, and I don't know if I missed it, there will be, that would be, I don't know if there should be an easement or something dedicated to the HOA that overlaps with that landscape buffer, that then, you know, allows them to maintain that retaining wall, and it's not the onus of the, of the property owner, because then you're going to have one side of the wall looking good, and then the side downstream a bit looking a little wonky, you know?
The 15-foot buffer around the property, we could turn that into a 15-foot easement and.
Call it.
To the HOA, that the HOA can maintain the planted buffer to the west, as well as the existing vegetation and the retaining wall to the east as well, so that it's all within an easement that it can be maintained.
We'll work it out. And then I just want to remind the applicant that we do not permit fences within easements. So then when you're creating a lot, and it has a drainage easement that meanders the back, or meanders the side, or meanders the back and the side of properties, you now are creating almost zero usable yard area. So you, we have a sales ordinance in town. When the application is in front of us, and during the sales ordinance, there's going to be a sheet that's going to be provided to the property owners that is going to alert them to the easements, that restriction. Why we bring up the 12 by 12 is the first thing they're going to do on day one, is come in for a fence permit. And once they put the fences and nobody can see what they're doing, those swales won't exist anymore. Then they're going to be calling our offices and saying, well, how come my yard doesn't drain? I have a puddle in my backyard. We need those inlets to prevent that from happening in the future. So that's why that comment was in there. We did skip anything I had on the green infrastructure. We went into a lot of detail about this iteration, because, and honestly, and I hate to say this, when you were in the first time, I relied on DEP because I said, oh, they're in for a general permit. They're going to have to have their stormwater reviewed by DEP. So I let it go. This time, I looked at it a little closer because what I wanted to alert the board is, if DEP, and I'm pretty, like, 90% sure they're going to make you do this green infrastructure, because we did reach out to them, and via email, they responded that they did alert you via email that your application or your revised application that was submitted will have to follow green infrastructure design. So, and that was sent to us. So they said that they haven't heard from you back, perhaps you haven't gotten that, but that was the message that they provided us. That's why we went through great detail, because if you follow green infrastructure, your basin cannot exceed, like, the drainage area that contributes to it cannot exceed 2.5 acres, right? And not for you, Mr. Shelley, but for the board. So if that, if that drainage area in there is in excess of 2.5 acres, you now either can come and ask for a variance. But when do they accept a variance? Because we adopt, you know, the stormwater rule, the stormwater rules that DEP puts out for us, we adopt them. They allow it when you could prove to them that you have some sort of hardship, and in this case, you don't. Your water table is like 12 feet down, your infiltration rate is wonderful. So it might prompt you then to do another infiltration basin somewhere on the property. And so that, to me, means you might lose some units. Something's going to happen significantly to this plan. I'm glad we don't have a quorum tonight. I'm glad we're going to come back. I'm glad we're going to have some time to reach out to DEP and kind of come back with an answer on that. And that's why we went through some details. In the additional comments that we didn't go over, there are some comments that have nothing to do with green infrastructure. So take a look at them, address that, come back to us. I'm not going to go into great detail on them, but I think those were the highlights. Also, when you're doing your lighting, I didn't have a chance to drive out there. I don't remember from last time. I didn't have a second to go and do the street view. But if there's any lighting that's along Poor Farm Road, add that to the lighting plan so that you could see if you meet the minimum requirements for the sidewalk lighting without adding anything. I'd encourage you, if you want, then, if you want to add lighting, there are utility poles out there that you can, and you can go to JC PNL and add them on there if you didn't want to do decorative lighting along, along Poor Farm Road. I think I hit everything.
Let me just address that. Certainly, the comments are substantial. We realize that because it's the DEP regulations and things like that, these are things that we expect and we believe we're going to be able to address with you, and you're both going to come to an agreement. So that's why we didn't get into it tonight. It's really a matter of, do the rules apply? Do they not apply? If they do apply, what are we going to do? And since we couldn't complete tonight, and we recognize that, we realized, let's take the month between now and our next appearance to see if we can't solve those things. So thank you.
Ms. Watt?
I'll actually hold off from making any comments, because knowing the engineering comments, knowing the planning concerns I have, I'm anticipating that there will be some changes to the site plan. And so I think I will just hold off. I believe the applicant doesn't have his planner here, too, so it doesn't make sense for me to even ask some questions, because the site layout might change for some reason.
I mean, we had our planner lined up this evening, but because we knew there'd only be five members, we knew that two at least did not read anything, because they haven't had a chance. You know, there was, we wanted to get through the engineering. We realized that we have the DEP issue to resolve in a month, and we're certainly going to come back with Dave Roberts, our planner, at the next meeting. So we'll address this.
Mr. Meitzler?
Like, Mr. Watt, I'm going to hold off on any other comment for now, too. Thank you.
Fire Marshal Hart?
Well, I know he's going to yell at me.
You're going to have to come to a mic, Tom.
I know there was a little mix-up with emails, and since this thing goes back to 2021, since I have this map here, the engineering shows a hydrant right here at the stop line.
Yep.
I requested it that it gets put on this side. You'll get it. I sent it late today. The only question I had, other question I had from looking at it again, was this back building at the cul-de-sac, why a handicap spot and five parking spaces? What kind of building is it? It looks totally.
It's a playground.
Oh, it's a playground?
Yeah, that's the top lot.
Oh, it's a 2,000-square-foot, and I'm looking, we got this building, and I'm going, why is that a building? Okay, so that makes sense why there's parking space.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything else, because of what's going on with this sidewalks or making the road, 24 is great. We're going to have to line, we're going to have to stripe it. Well, we could put one line, because you're using the Belgian blocks. We won't have to paint the blocks yellow, but we'll have to put signs on both sides.
Sure.
Otherwise, they're going to park there.
Yeah.
And then we won't fit. But you'll get that memo by the time we get back next month. But it was just those two small, two small things.
No issues relocating the hydrant, striping the siding, whatever you need.
Yeah, when we get down to that road. Okay, I'm good, Jim.
Thank you, Fire Marshal. And we're going to, Mr. Clancy, anything from you?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go to the, I'm going to go to the board. Mr. Scogno.
Thank you, gentlemen. I believe going back to 2020, Fire Marshal, I believe you were somewhat concerned about the one-way in and one-way out.
We fixed that.
But what you did was you made a wire and made a loop, so it's still coming in and going out the same way.
No.
Two.
This right here, Mr..
We talked about Route 9.
No, no, no. I was talking about, the original plan had a cul-de-sac here. So it could only go in this roadway, the main Lola. Now they took the cul-de-sac and came all the way out. So there are two ways to get in here now, or to get out, from the original drawing.
In the event there was an accident located at this intersection, his main concern was they would have no way to get into the site, residents would have no way to get out. So now we have a secondary access point in case there's utility work, an accident, anything, there's two ways.
What road is that, the second way?
This is Lucy Drive.
Lucy Drive coming in?
And Lola Drive. They're both accessed onto Poor Farm Road.
So they all enter out and enter on the Poor Farm Road?
Correct. There's no one way.
So you feel adequate, your fire trucks can get in and in, on a timely basis?
The most concern going back a few years ago was that if we have a problem here, I can't, or a problem back here and here, I can't get past, I can't get people out.
Yeah.
By having this secondary roadway, that's basically just going to get people out of this development or in it faster, it'll save me time. If there's a fire in one of these two homes in the beginning, units can come from here on the backside, or I can evacuate for a gas leak out this way. So yeah, this definitely solved my concerns from the original two cul-de-sacs.
If you're satisfied with that, then.
Yeah. No, that, it definitely helps everything. You know, I think it even going to help the school buses, right?
And these homes, they could be sold?
Yeah, they're all for sale.
Yeah, so once somebody purchases it, can they rent them?
I'll answer that question. You know, as any homeowner, you have the right to rent your property.
So it'll become rental property if I wanted to rent my home, if I purchased it?
If you were to buy it, you wanted to rent it, you could rent it.
Right, right. Is there an age in this community?
No.
Okay, so there'll be children?
Yes.
So where's the adequate for the education for the school bus coming in?
School bus would pull in from Poor Farm Road, be able to loop through the community. It would make sense that, you know, it could do pickup either right at Poor Farm or right at the intersection of Lola and Lucy.
Because I believe the last time, we didn't have that provision.
Because the last time, it was the cul-de-sac, like we just talked about, there was a lot of circulation logistics that.
Yeah.
Are much easier and simplified with this configuration.
Yeah, there was some talk of a sidewalk where a resident would walk to Route 9. I mean, that's a trip.
Right. We provide sidewalk throughout our community, along our entire frontage, tying into the sidewalk that's there now at Brewster and continuing beyond there.
Do you know of any local bus transportation that takes people to up and down?
I do not believe there's a bus route on Poor Farm, but obviously, it's a little ways out to Route 9, but.
And you spoke to residents about this, because the last couple of times, place was pretty well-packed.
Yeah, they had concerns regarding, again, the, at the time, it was the number of units and the distance that they were to their properties. And I think a lot of them just had some general questions about, what does this do to my water table, or different, you know, what is the drainage like? You know, so we tried to address their questions during the previous hearings and tried to take in some of those concerns and comments when we came in with this revised set of plans.
And the homes for the 20%, was it low, where are they located compared to, are they separated? Are they in between each one?
They're scattered throughout. You'll see them, their depth is a little bit smaller than the other ones, but they still have two-car garages, two, you know, two-car driveways, similar look from the front. They're all duplexes.
So they'll be scattered within the other homes?
Correct.
They're not in a separate area?
The previous presentation was that we had multifamily stacked towns. We heard the criticisms on that. We heard the advocacy from Vina, and they are now truly integrated, meaning placed within, and looking from the front, very similar to the other units.
And the last traffic study, I believe, did not pick up the school bus. Unfortunately, he was not there at the time when school buses were coming down the road and things like that. And so I hope that's taken into consideration. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stoner, anything?
What's the height of the container?
Um, I could look it up in the plans if you like. Got a maximum height, about seven feet. It's maybe six to seven feet, you know, majority of it.
And you only have it on one side of the property, which is on that side, right?
Correct.
I'm just curious, why it wouldn't be on the other side, too? This side?
I, okay.
Yes.
Oh, the, it's just the way the grade changes across the property. The grade change along here is much more substantial than back in the side. So the way this road grades is more or less consistent with the back of a lot of these units. So there's not a need for retaining wall. We have space to grade within that. And also, the wall helps us preserve that existing vegetation, where we cleared it all the way to the property line, and then had to grade it all the way down to our site, it kind of gets rid of some of that buffer that we were talking about.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Connor?
Oh, Mr. Connor.
Ms. Andrews?
Nothing right now.
Okay. All right. I'm assuming that's it for you tonight, right? You're not going to make any final comments or anything, right? Every, all the professionals are satisfied right now? We're just going to give you another date. And I, I don't know what you have in mind. What do we have in mind? Let's see.
Chairman Sullivan, I think we would hold off from giving a date. We know GHS also has adjourned, so they go first. And I know that you have some work to do, too. So I think you can, you and I need to chat tomorrow, because we have a full agenda. I don't mind giving you a date, but you will be, again, at the, there are applications, bigger applications ahead of you. So I don't want to give you a date just for the sake of it.
Can we adjourn to June? If we don't get everything done by then, will we adjourn?
June, I don't believe so, because I said there's an application ahead of you, which adjourned, and I already have two applications that night, two new applications that night. So, I mean, I could give you a July date, but again, July, the same thing, there are two applications ahead of you.
I'll take, I'd like to take the next day, but again, see if we can.
People are dropping off, or they're continuing. We'll get lucky.
Listen, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying, I don't really set the dates. This is, I don't have what's going to come up in the pipeline, so.
Right. Can we take the July date, and we'll see what happens by then?
I defer to the township professor.
Yeah, July is fine. June is not possible. July, but please know, there are two big applications ahead of you.
It would be the 21st.
July 21st, okay. So we're continued without further.
There's only one meeting that month.
Continued without further notice?
Is that, July is only one meeting, is it?
Yes, 21st.
Okay.
That's what I have in the schedule, anyway. Correct?
Natalie says yes.
That's good. Okay, this is, this matter at 83-2020Z at 2G Poor Farm LLC, located on Poor Farm Road, will be continued to Thursday, July 21, 2022, no further notice. You will bring a stenographer at that point, I guess, right?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. McGowan, thank you very much.
Sullivan.
Mr. Shelley, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Good night.
Have a good Fourth of July, because we won't see you before. Safe holidays.
Could you send me a digital?
I thought, by the way, I thought that was very admirable.
All right.
It was probato, I know. I didn't see him slip you anything, so. Thank you very much for that. I saw him in distress and.
Yeah, I applaud him just talking about it. He in-house worked it.
I applaud him just talking about it, he in-house worked here rather than normal.
Well, that's why I wanted to stop him, so, thanks again, Mr. McGowan. Board, we just have a couple items left, we got general public comments, there is no one in the public this evening. I'll entertain some quick board comments if you want, before we call for an adjournment, I'll start on my left. Mr. Scogno, good?
Still on YouTube?
We are still live, the meeting is still in session. Hold off.
I'll hold off right now.
Okay, Mr. Stoner, any comments? No? Mr. Connor?
None.
Ms. Andrews? And from the professionals? Okay, on the legal front, Mr. Clancy, anything?
Are we, do we, have to go into executive session following this, or?
I don't believe so, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Okay, so having no public here, then I'm going to call for an adjournment, someone in favor of adjournment? Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, thank you very much, we'll be back here on, I believe it's May 19th, did I say? May 19th.